Okay, alright. Uh, we're gonna call this city council meeting tonight on February tenth. Uh, called meeting to order. Um, roll call. Uh, Moore. Uh, Mar.
Here.
Uh, Engstrom.
Here.
Mooney.
Here.
Engelhardt.
Here.
Alright, uh, let's stand for pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. And I have a motion to approve the agenda. Make motion.
Second.
Alright. It's been moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, are there any citizens here tonight who would like to speak before the council? Oh, yeah, right, give me a quiet night, okay. Uh, Ashley, we will, um.
Need a motion to approve her first.
To approve her?
Yep, as city treasurer.
Uh, I need a motion to approve the appointment of Ashley Kinsling to be our city treasurer.
So.
Second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. It's, opposed? Okay, it's been moved and seconded and voted on, and so Ashley, you are our new city treasurer. Surprise!
She needs to come up now.
Okay, if you wanna come up, I'll give you the oath.
Does it matter what it is?
Yeah, it does not, okay. Alright, um, repeat after me, please. I, Ashley Kinsling.
I, Ashley Kinsling.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Uh, to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all duties of the office of tre- r- 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 city treasurer.
Can you repeat that?
Uh, sorry. Discharge all duties of the office of city tre- r- 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 Okay.
Say it's a law.
Dis- discharge all duties.
Discharge all duties.
Of the office of city treasurer in Postville as now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Okay, alright, well, thank you! And Ashley, can I assume you work at Fidelity Bank?
How did you guess?
Well, your shirt. Your shirt gave it away, so. Uh, what have, what have you working with us, Ashley, so, alright. Okay, uh, number seven on the agenda, public hearing for the code of ordinances of the city of Postville.
So you wanna open the hearing to the public?
Okay. Um, I will open this hearing to the public. Are there any who would choose to speak for or against it?
Have you know what he did?
Sure, so, tonight they're looking at adopting an ordinance to, that amended their entire city code of ordinances. Um, so that they are current with the most effective state laws.
So this is moving the.
Code of ordinances.
New quarter of ordinances.
Yeah.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance seven oh two dash two five, adopting the code of ordinances.
My second. Uh, it's been moved in seconded that we adopt this ordinance, seven oh two dash twenty-five.
Need to call it off.
Um, well, this will be a roll call vote. Uh, Mar.
Yes.
Engstrom, yes. Mooney.
Yes.
Uh, Engelhardt. She is, okay. Uh, it's been moved in seconded that we approve this code of ordinance.
So that would be your first hearing, and if you want to waive your second and third, you would need to make a.
I would like to waive the second and third. Second, okay. It's been moved in seconded that we, um, dispense with the second and third reading of this ordinance. Uh, roll call again, okay. Uh, Mar.
Yes.
Engstrom, yes. Mooney.
Yes.
The, uh, Engelhardt?
Yes.
Okay, alright, uh, passed. Alright, number eight, resolution. Approving administrative service agreement with Midwest Group Benefits, a resolution. One four four eight dash twenty-five.
This is the, uh, the insurance man that was here.
That's right, yep, so this would be them administering the third, so they're the third party, so they're administering the claims that are coming in and doing the reimbursements to the employees through their office. I know I sent you a pretty thick document, but yeah, this would be the agreement to do that.
I move that we adopt resolution fourteen forty-eight twenty-five, approving administrative service agreement with Midwest Group.
I have a second?
I have a second cut.
Okay, um, roll call?
Yep.
Okay, uh, Mar?
Yes.
Engstrom, yes. Mooney?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so it passed. Alright, so we now have an insurance provider for city, um, insurance. Okay, uh, now we're on resolution one four four nine dash twenty-five, which is a resolution requesting funds for educational programming from Winnebago County Solid Waste Agency.
We did this review of that?
We do, yep, and it's a grant through the landfill. Um, I think last year it was only like a hundred and twenty-one dollars, but we use it towards, um, flyers for recycling, um, garbage notices, those types of things.
How much was it this year?
Uh, we don't know until we submit the grant, it's, it varies, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, let's call the roll again.
Need a motion first.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution one four four nine dash two five.
Okay, do I have a second?
One second.
Alright. Um, now we'll have the roll call, Mar?
Yes.
Engstrom, yes. Mooney?
Yes.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Uh, so, resolution one four four nine dash twenty-five has been approved. Alright, um, now we're at the consent agenda.
I have a question, that police charger, is that what we talked about with, um?
You're gonna give an update on that?
Yeah, that'll be a part of the consent.
I know, but I was just asking about that.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Move that we.
Wait, he's gonna update you on the police charger.
No. You're getting a card in front of the horse. So the charger, my goal was to, um, um, keep it until the second officer goes to the academy for transportation back and forth. Well, last week I had to send it down to Torkelson's for more repairs, and seems like about every month we're putting money into it, it's a twenty eighteen. So it's due for, to get a new, a new vehicle. And being with, we have a new officer, uh, hired. We're gonna need something more reliable than what we got, you know, the charger, so I'm thinking is, the money's there, um, I wanna start getting some bids out on some vehicles.
Can you trade it in then?
Trade in or sell, we can trade in or sell outright, one of the two. Um, I'm thinking if we go to those one area or dealership, there's about a two-week turnaround on getting the vehicle, cause lately, they've been about a year to get them. But this, uh, who did the update for the Ford, they didn't get them out of Kentucky and there's a two-week turnaround, so. Might go that route, if we go that route, then I would, I would say we just sell the charger outright.
Either get more money.
Right, yeah, so. So I'm gonna, hopefully by next month's meeting, have some bids out on vehicle, go from there.
It's not one diamond, it's right now.
Yeah, I'm not for sure what the, what our next bill's gonna be, but I know it's not gonna be cheap.
What's going on with it?
Uh, this last go-around had, brakes were completely out of it in the front end, and there was some, the ball joints needed to be replaced. And I think there was something with the U-joints as well.
Is it kind of a lemon disturbance?
It's just getting, getting aged.
I know there's mileage somewhere in our bracket, but.
Yeah, it's, like I said, it's twenty eighteen, they don't even, um, offer the charger and, for police vehi- police packages anymore. They don't even make them.
That's saying something.
Right.
Others had issues too.
I was never fond of it in the beginning, but I was, so I'm not the one that ordered it back then, so.
How many miles does it?
Let's push, just get close, let's see. At right, as of right now, it's ninety-six, two-two-seven.
Twenty-one?
Twenty-eighteen. Yeah. So it's pushing a hundred thousand. And we normally do the five-year rotation on the vehicles anyway.
So it's time.
It's time, yeah.
Okay, in that case, I will move to accept the consent agenda. Are there any other things on there?
But you do have it in your.
There, we set some aside, that's probably one of the, was it for the, this was July first, I think it was.
For July first, we put it in the budget.
Okay, so it was.
It was part of the.
It's in the budget for July first.
But you're not gonna hold out that long.
Well, we'll see, I don't, I mean, might be able to, but, um.
If you're just gonna stick that kinda money into it now, or you're gonna get some value out of utilizing it?
Can, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna put any more money into it, that's just it. I mean, I think it's, what we, what you just did is sufficient for now, because there was some other issues in there, like, as, if you're gonna get rid of it, now's the time to get rid of it. I'm like, I'm not worried about, I'm not gonna put any more money into picks on that, so.
Do you have just a transport vehicle? Or do you just whoever's on duty?
They're all.
If you have to do a transfer.
They're all transport vehicles.
And plus, you're using that until you get rid of it, so.
Right. Yeah.
Okay. Um, I own a few things in there. Uh, in Zach's thing on one seventeen, uh, we got a new ice cream cooler?
At the swimming pool last year.
Oh, the swimming pool. Yeah.
What?
Yeah, they bought a ice cream cooler at the pool last, last season.
That's awesome.
It was like four hundred dollars.
They're gonna sell ice cream out of the pool, no?
Okay, they're gonna try. Yeah. And, um, Crystal, I see the Postville movie is gonna be the only, okay.
My name is Crystal Daffy, and I am the Postville Public Library Director and Community Developer for the city of Postville. Um, so, I wanted to go over a couple things on my little report, um, cause I do have some updates even since I typed this up. So I did meet with the Decor Chamber of Commerce finally in January, I contact, sorry, I don't have a full voice. I contacted them the week I started the community developer job, and this, this soon as they could meet with me was January. So anyway, so we did have a nice meeting, um, and I've already met with Wakon and a few other people. Um, and, um, we did receive full funding for the AmeriCorps position at the food pantry, which I, mostly I did all the work for that in between positions, like Harton Soul was over and community development had started, and I sort of just did it. Um, so I just kinda helped the food pantry do that, but they interviewed someone, and I believe they're offering them the position. So we've created a job in town that wasn't here before. It is a temporary position, but it's about six-plus months. And if that's something that really works well for the food pantry, they can decide to do that every year. Um, so there's no reason that can't be sort of a regular position, not that it's gonna be the same person every time, but it's a really great position for somebody who maybe can't work full-time, maybe they're a student. Um, so that's really exciting that they'll have help there, um, cause everyone there is a volunteer. And, um, yes, our movie was accepted into the Oneida Film Festival, um, and they emailed me about, I think, and I now have two different days and times, so I'm waiting for them to get back to me, because they told me Saturday at four, but the schedule on their website says Friday at four. So, one of those days, either day, I think is a pretty good time, pretty primo time for screening, they're gonna screen the film, and then they invited me and Austin to stay, to be there, and to do a Q and A session afterwards. Um, I've committed to do that, depending on which day it is, I'm fine with either. Um, I'm not sure if Austin's gonna join me or not, he's not quite as, um, outgoing as I am, so. Austin's the one who did all the hard work for the film, like did all the videography, editing, um, and another thing that he didn't have to do, but he did, cause it's awesome. They really wanted to have, um, closed captions for the film, and we didn't do those, because it would have cost more money, and then it's like, what language do we even do? Can we do six of them on screen at the same time? So we didn't do anything. So he actually went back and added closed captioning for the entire film, um, just on his own.
In what language?
Uh, in English, um, and, um, there were a few moments where he needed me to sort of like, be a second set of ears and help him figure out what it was saying, but so that we could submit the film with, with closed captions, which makes it more accessible. Um, and then, um, at the bottom, I didn't make it bold, but I think it's very cool. I'm, I've been sort of working as a liaison with ISU Extension. We're trying to work on an event in town, probably later, like this is early, but to try and get dental care for folks in town. Um, so we're working on that, and I have sent out a post already on Facebook, I already have three wonderful nurse volunteers, but we are looking for volunteers in the community to do pre-screening with folks, because for them to do dental work, they need to know about any other existing conditions and things ahead of time, so. Um, bilingual nurses especially, but we already have one of those, but, um, so yeah, so those are just some things we've been working on, so. Questions?
Alright, so that's not this year's festival?
Yes, this will be this March.
Okay, I was thinking it was like in January.
No, it's in March, and you know, every film festival has like, you can only submit a film that was made like certain months and certain days. And we also, I tried to submit it to Debut, Debut Film Festival, which is kind of like a, a big deal, I guess. Um, will not allow you to submit a film if they are not the premier for the state of Iowa. And we were already in the Wakon Star City Film Festival, and we already would have been in Decor anyway, so then. So I didn't know that, so when I went to apply, they were like, nope, we have to be the premier, and I thought, well, you're just not getting it then.
So, you're lost a beer.
Yeah, I think it's more important for it to be local anyway, because the folks in Decor are more likely to engage with supporting our communities and folks in the theater, so.
And Crystal, the start, the dental thing, um.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna ask about.
So.
No dates, no info, we're, we're in the early stages of trying to get grant funding.
Okay.
Get the nurse volunteers.
So maybe in lack of reinventing the wheel, um, our Board of Health worked with University of Iowa through an I smile project for a number of years. Um, my Board of Health Chairwoman, Jeannie Stein, would maybe be a good representative to contact for some names input. Um, I don't know who your dental people are.
We've already got that lined up. Um, we're, yeah, ISU Extension is handling like the grant funding and sort of the heavy lifting, and I'm handling the translators in town, interpreters in town, nurses in town. Um, it may even be a situation where we actually have vans for the day, and we go to Waterloo, that's where the dental.
Okay, cause these actually were dental students through the University of Iowa that came here through, um, the school systems, they came to Wakon.
Mm-hmm. Well, Postville still has that happening, I believe.
Lansing tried to, Lansing, I guess, didn't wanna be involved, but Wakon and, and Postville. And they dealt with, um, I think there was income guideline eligibility.
Yeah.
Um, they treated a lot of children that had really serious issues.
Yes, this is for adults, the school, Postville School does I smile still, I believe, and they still, like, so kids already have access to that in our community through the school, through Postville School. Maybe we could do better at reaching out there, but this is for adults.
And they were, they're still struggling to get, uh, people, dental people that looked at Medicaid. So.
You wanna send me that email of the, your contact?
I can, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Crystal. Thank you.
My question.
Alright.
So you have a motion?
Alright, uh, motion to approve, did we have a?
We had that from Engelhardt.
Okay. Uh, voice vote?
No, you need a second, yep.
Alright, uh, Becky moved that we accept the consent agenda, do I have a second? Alright, um, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, consent agenda. Voice?
All in.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion approved, okay. Uh, resolution for money to pay the claims.
Motion to pay the claims.
Alright. It was moved by, uh, Lori to pay the claims, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we pay the claims, um, so roll call here, Devo- uh, Mar?
Yes.
Engstrom, yes. Mooney?
Yeah.
Engelhardt?
Yes.
Okay, alright, uh, recommendation parking, planning and zoning commission, is that what these papers are here?
Yep, so you had in your packet that went out, a recommendation that came from the Planning and Zoning Commission as it deals with front yard parking. I laid out for you what the zoning ordinance reads, and then I, if you see it, references code section one thirty-five ten. So, the ordinance that you would be changing if you so choose, based on their recommendation, would be this one thirty-five ten. I guess we've had some complaints about people parking like up against their homes, multiple cars, not on, you know, paved parking, you've got multiple cars in front yards. And the question was taken back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to make a recommendation, if they felt that that needed to be addressed. And they stated in their meeting that they felt it did.
Okay.
It needed to be addressed. So you would address that in this chapter one thirty-five ten, so I guess the question back to you is, do you want to make that change? If so, I would need to have the city attorney draft an ordinance for your review.
I really think. One, two, you agree? Why, what choice do people have though, that in the winter, when they come?
Well, they would have to park in their backyard, or they would have to find alternate parking. So, right now, it's where they're, the homes that have multiple, multiple cars up against their house, and.
So is it just an aesthetics thing, or is it that the matters go into the?
Yep, so, um, I think that when it was brought to them, it's an aesthetic thing, yeah, but, that they didn't like the looks of that.
There's an example, is that on, um, Tilden?
East Tilden.
They have a, a cement parking area, and they park one truck sideways, and then a couple other ones, and they have one on the side of their house, one with the trailer on the back in the front of the house. And then they have, uh, sideways by their garage. And it's a business running out of a home, I believe, which I don't think is in the zone either, so.
I guess the question is addressing these homes that have multiple, multiple vehicles. And how do we, how do we dra- address that? I guess those are questions that you guys.
And it's probably only problematic when there's winter, no off-street or, or on-street.
I would say that's more of an issue than, Matt, would you agree?
Yeah, cause they can't park an alley, cause it's snowparking it down.
Right, yeah, alley parking's not allowed.
What choice would they have practically?
Um.
I mean, if, if.
I guess the question is, how many people are living in a home that you have that many vehicles, right? And maybe they, if they don't drive them all, should they be putting them in a storage maybe, or?
I mean, so maybe you should address that, like.
Yeah, we have families that have fifteen to twenty kids, of course.
Well, they're not driving their cars.
They don't all have their own vehicles.
Well, you know, this, this building permit that's in that packet, you know, that, that three, that three blocks there by the funeral home, that's four, four, and five bed, you know. Where all, you know, where are all those vehicles gonna park?
They're gonna be, there's a cement, there's gonna be cement parking.
But, or, you know.
Right, what the code allows, which is.
That same rule, that, that we were talking about, have it with Sam, where you have to have one and a half parking places per whatever.
Yeah, but they had to show, um, two spots per unit.
I mean, so, this three picks will have to show.
They had to, yep, and they were able to show that, so they approved that.
I think they have one on Maple, too, they're gonna extend where their garage driveway is over north of where their parking thing is.
And they're putting a parking pad in the backyard.
Yeah.
Which they got written permission from the funeral home, which they brought in. And it has to be all concrete parking, it can't be any gravel.
Right.
I mean, the houses that you're, that you're mentioning, that you've seen, and that have called attention to them. So it's an issue that has to be addressed, but we have to give people an option to do something that they've been doing all of a sudden becomes not okay. So what do they do? An issue with that other thing is, I don't think that that company should be burning their business out of their home unless they're licensed to. Right. So then that's something else we could address. Yeah. Or maybe having, you know, if we know that there's multi-families living in a home, maybe insisting or, or inspecting how many parking places that they have, or they'll have to just cut down on their cars, but I mean, to, to make an ordinance that not give people, or if they don't have an option in the winter, what? There's an example, right across from Walz Park, there's a little house, and they have a long driveway, but they parked the car right on the front lawn. And they could be parking in the driveway. Right. So one go for everybody, but there will be some people who, who don't have a choice, so what, what do they do? And so which, you know, do, do the aesthetics override the?
I mean, that's questions that you guys need to answer.
I wouldn't want that to be next to my house, all those parking cars parked in my, under the grass next to my house. Personally, I mean, I don't, maybe some people will mind it.
Right, so what DeVore's saying is, if you pass an ordinance not allowing it, what is their option? Where can they go?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's, and then there's just some they don't even have, I mean, we have that crossover on, if, is that on?
What was that, can't hear you?
I'm trying to think what that street was, where they had requested, um.
Kerb Cut?
Yeah, cause they didn't have even a backyard option for a, before additional parking.
It was on library.
It's on library, yeah. Um, you know, so like DeVores is, you know, if they don't have an option, it's, they shouldn't, they can't be penalized for not having options either. You know, they've only got a short driveway, and they can't be parked on the sidewalk. You know, or extended into the sidewalk, because they're trying to ram multiple vehicles into a short driveway.
And even the house by mine, I can never mind aesthetics, but in the summer, you have all that mud and the soil, you know, traveling down into the streets and going down in the waters and whatever. It's an issue, but I'm, I mean, at that house, where, where would they park, for example?
We have a neighbor out here that they're gonna get their water shut off. You know, as it is, it's already dense, you know, cause they're pulling off into their yard. But, they just, they don't have any other options either, they don't have a backyard, and they're only face library. So I don't know, but they, they've got a short driveway and one's in the garage.
I'm wondering how many of those properties are rentals?
Most.
Right, so the people living there aren't gonna be able to, so you have to get the landlords to either extend parking or do something.
That's true, what did you say that one time, I forget what we were discussing, I don't know if it was snow plowing or something else, maybe with the trucks, maybe changing that truck route. But like, you know, New York, how you have to have ultimate parking everywhere.
Ultimate parking?
I forget what we said, why I couldn't work. I forget what we said, why it wouldn't work in Postville. Is that something maybe that could work? So they have to move their cars, but at least even in the winter, they could park in the streets, but on alternate sides and alternate days or whatever, something like that?
Well, you've got some streets that are no parking on one side, so it wouldn't work for those. Like, I think Lybrand is a no parking on one side, and I think down here in Green, isn't it? No, we were gonna change that to a one-way, but you guys didn't wanna do that.
And that's where I was thinking we had that, that issue, so.
Didn't have a way to pull off. Would the Planning and Zoning Committee be somebody we could go back to and ask them for ideas on options? Or just?
Um, I mean.
Just the ones who?
They're just the ones that gave the recommendation that something needed to be changed with front yard parking. I don't know that they had any recommendations on what they were to do.
I mean, could we change those streets that are where the one side you can't park? If we did change that to alternate parking, you're still getting the same effect, the one side you can't park. It's just that it changes every day. Is that something that we could look into? Is that?
I don't think we can do that in the winter though, because of.
Well, the, child, right, well.
Just plow once half.
Yeah, I guess.
The question is, would people comply with moving vehicles? That would be another issue that our street crews would probably encounter.
Oh, you can monitor it.
Right.
It's gonna be tough to keep the odd even days, but then in winter time.
There's not a limit.
Training to make sure people don't park out there all the night. Not like with tickets or whatever. Where are they gonna park them if they don't have a place? Again, we're back at where they're gonna park.
Right.
Well, and like Post Street, you know, you can't park on the one side.
Wrong side.
When there's snow, so, yeah, so. So maybe you just don't do anything.
Right, so it's, it's the zoning, it's not the Board of Adjustments that's got this?
Right, Planning and, Planning and Zoning Commission is, makes recommendations. And they made this recommendation to you, the council members. Because you control your ordinance.
That was a Board of Adjustments?
No, Board of Adjustments, not, they're, they're not a recommending board.
That's more likely problem, but I think without a viable solution.
We still have a conditional, like a conditional use permit, you know, that you know, you have to come and maybe it's an individual situation, you know.
Do rentals have to have a minimum number of parking spots? Okay.
You know, it's not maybe done a blanketed approval, it's a conditional use per.
What have multiple cars?
Well.
So many cars per bit or so many?
No, the lot itself, the addressed structure itself is, so a case-by-case basis, conditional use approval.
You mean to park in your yard?
To have a, and, and maybe then that, that unit has to be given, you know, some time to put like a gravelled spot or a concreted spot. So it's not a, a, you know, a, a grassed.
The thing is, even if people change it to concrete or whatever, you're still gonna have aesthetics.
Right.
So instead of grass, you're still gonna have six cars parked up front of the house.
But if you, if you put an expense on somebody, then maybe they won't do it.
Right. Well, they'd have the expense anyway, but I'm saying that's still not a solution. If the problem is simply aesthetics, that's still not a solution. You're just changing what the cars are parked.
And that's why if it was maybe a, a case-by-case, not a blanketed approval for the whole town. You know, this one property comes in at a time, cause they don't have any other options. So that, you know, you're dealing with just that one individual house.
Right, but then what do you base it on? If you say to them.
That, that zoning commission would have to go naturally look at it and prove it, and, and prove that they don't have any other options. If they got other options, they deny them. Or they get, you know, maybe there's a minimum and a maximum number of allotted vehicles.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of properties where there's cars that, yeah, they might be legally licensed and are sitting, but they're not mobile.
Right.
Yeah, we got a few of those in town.
And, you know, just again, cause they keep their license plates valid, they couldn't drive off the lot.
How's that something you would? How's that something you would follow?
I mean, we're gonna talk aesthetics.
Well, it was all under junk vehicle, it would have to meet all the requirements that it's operable, tires. When we're looking at enforcing junk vehicle code.
She was saying that they keep the license plates valid.
Yeah.
Just park there and not use.
You know what I'm saying, that, the white van and then there's like a black Tahoe.
Well, there's a couple on other end of town that.
But I mean, they haven't moved.
Got legal places.
Flat, flat tires and the Tahoe's got a broken tie rods and stuff, it sits there and it can't move.
So it looks like it's more problems than just the cars parking.
I mean, it's, I mean, if it's an aesthetics issue, then that's, we gotta go whole town aesthetics, it can't just because they're in the front yard.
Speaking of aesthetics, I wish we had a rule that wants the, uh, within twenty-four hours of the garbage people coming that they have to move. To move their tugs back off the street.
Totes.
Totes, yeah.
That may be more of a season than aesthetic.
Well, they quit putting garbage in the recycle tote when it's a non-recycle day.
Yeah.
Cause they're not gonna pick it up.
Well, there's something that puts, leaves their tote up in front and then just keep bringing it out.
So, you, do you wanna not do anything then with this parking recommendation for now? You wanna just think more on it and?
I would like to maybe not make any decision tonight, but maybe speak with, you know, the zoning commission or, you know, make.
Or who, who would be able to look at a long-term plan to get that option, is that?
I don't think so. I think we got, we would just need to put our heads together with this. And maybe you'd wanna wait and get some input from the mayor, because he's the one that sent this to the Planning and Zoning Commission too, so. And asked for their input.
I think so we can table it to the.
Yeah, there's no, it was just discussion tonight.
Blanket rule would be too much and.
I agree.
If it's aesthetics, then where do you stop?
Well, and like on Post Street, you can't park there when there's snow and then you know, across the street from me, then in the back is the alley and you can't park there if it's snow, so.
Not a lot of options.
Yeah, there aren't a lot of options. Some of them have garages down there. But several of them don't, so. Well, right, yeah. Or to get their motorcycle.
Yeah, I think we have to look for more solutions.
Okay, yep.
Yeah. Alright. Okay, budget workshop action item.
Okay, so you had your budget workshop and you deli-ed up your money. I think I gave you that colored sheet. And I wanted you to take a look at it one more time, and if you're all good with it, I would need a motion then to allocate the funding to those organizations.
That's the paper that came.
Okay.
I know I saw.
Okay.
Did we ever get, um, budgeting information from the?
We did not. We did not hear anything back from the fire department.
So what happens with that?
That's a good question. That would be up to you folks. So, um, we have the twenty-eight E, which I gave you a copy of. I highlighted the budget portion of what that agreement says. I don't think we got a budget from them last year at all. And now we're on a second year of not getting what we need for that twenty-eight E.
Is there, is there some kind of penalty or something that happens if they don't do that, or we just ignore it?
I mean, there's nothing in the, in there about a penalty, but I mean, you ask all these other organizations to give you financials and account for money that's given to them, the fire department would be no different. So, you know, you're giving them tax dollars, you really need to know how they're spending it.
Yes, do the rural people.
Absolutely.
The who people?
The rural, the rural.
Townships.
Oh, rural. I'm sorry, I thought you were saying rural.
That's us.
Townships, rural, I thought it. Arduoario.
So what do you guys think?
So we're looking at the colored sheet right now, right?
Was there anything within our legal allowances to do, if we have anything given a budget?
I mean, you can allocate whatever you think they should have.
And so basically that on the watch to start out of the mid.
Good question.
Did we propose the thirty-two-five to them?
Um, I think your conversation with Larry last meeting was, he wanted, they wanted fifteen hundred more. And we said, but we don't, what for? Because we didn't get a budget and he, I was directed to give him a copy of the twenty-eight E, which I sent out in the packet. So I just left it the same amount as the year before because we didn't get anything, so I.
Get their attention.
But I would think maybe we say you're not getting a check from us until you provide a financial statement to us. Maybe that's what you said.
Yeah, maybe we need to do that.
I think we would be in our rights, within our rights to say that.
Well, I think that it makes you responsible to the taxpayers.
Right, right. Well, and just so we don't get flack from anybody else, the firemen don't have to do it, so why should we have to present a budget, so.
So if that's the case, you know, just make sure you put that in your motion.
Okay. Alright.
Is there, when does this go into, after we have final deadline to give them sort of the option, if you don't give us the budget by?
Well, their deadline was December fifteenth. You have to set he, your hearings tonight, so, you know, we've got a.
So tonight is the date?
Yeah, we needed it and.
So we can give them any money until they let us know what you're spending it? Is that right?
Well, that would be up to you, but I mean, you can allocate them the same amount you did last year. That's what I proposed, but I would say, until they provide you with a financial statement of what they spent the tax dollars on, no check would be issued.
Now, are they aware of the deadline? I mean, have we reached out to them?
You have two commission members that serve on that board. We have had these conversations.
It's not new, as someone who does this every year, I know it's coming every year, I know when it's due every year, and I have to account for every penny.
Every year.
Need to send you to talk.
Who are the, besides, um, Dennis and Larry, who's the third city?
Bill Harris.
Or is, is he their appointed one?
Yeah. He's the city appointed one.
Keep hearing, I thought I heard Travis.
He's, would be a rural. He's a township.
So who's the other two?
Ron Reenie and Meyer, Eric Meyer. That's who's the commission.
I mean, and it works both ways, like technically, you could be giving them less than, well, I'm saying less than they need, but we don't have a budget. Could even be giving them more than they need.
It also states in there, they're supposed to tell you if they have any surplus, I mean.
Right.
We just need to see their financials.
You need to see something here. Uh, you need a budget, but you do need to see the financial statement from last year.
We owe it to the people.
Right.
So can we get like Larry or Dennis or Dr. Bill Harris, get them together and go to them or something?
Um, I know the mayor said that they would be fine with the budget being the same as last year if we would just get rid of making the rural pay half of the water and sewer.
Why would we do that though?
But that's right in the twenty-eight E, and if you're gonna change your twenty-eight E, you gotta go back to all the townships. And remember, water and sewer is not, it's our water and sewer revenue that the people of the town are being billed for, so it's a whole different funding source. So that's not really tax dollars for us.
Doing a whole twenty-eight E all over.
Yeah. And, I mean, I don't think that's really how that works. I think that we're owed a budget.
Maybe, how are we gonna get them to give us what we want? Don't you think that the people that are in the commission could meet with them?
Or do you want me to have the city attorney get involved?
Well, maybe that's what we need to do. We're just not issue the check.
And that can be right in your motion that you make, so.
So they don't get their check until we get the financials.
A budget and a financial statement from last year's funds, yeah.
I think also, that should also have a limit, and if it's not done by so-and-so date, they're just forfeit.
Yeah, that'll get their attention.
Cause then they, they can, as long as they can keep their heads above water, you know, and get them another eight months. Nobody else gets that kind of fee away.
Right.
So maybe.
When's today, February tenth? March tenth?
I mean, it should be right there. They've hopefully been working.
Right.
In the budget, it's not that they have to go invent the lesson.
So, we need a budget by March tenth?
When you have to have it certified?
Yeah, it's, we, well, I need you guys to set your hearings tonight, so if you're give, sticking to the same amount, that's fine. But you can put in your conditions, no check will be issued to you until we receive a financial statement and an updated budget for the new fiscal year.
Okay, so then we don't have to put a date on. We could just say.
Well, your date would be what we pay in April, or we pay in October and April, we make two payments a year to them.
So they won't get their April check.
Yeah, you pay April, October twenty and April twenty each year.
So unless we get a budget, you will not get a check and financial statement.
That's how the motion should be.
Yeah.
However you want it.
That's what I'm trying to write down.
You've got it written down, Mary.
Alright, okay. Alright, and are there other, uh, things on that?
Does anyone else have any other, you wanna make any changes to?
I think we worked through that twenty thousand pretty, pretty well.
Yeah, okay, so you're fine then with?
Everything else. I just want to ask you again about the parks. Um, like, I don't see anything on that line. Can you just explain to me again about the?
Yep, so the park, yep, so the playground equipment is in this budget year, so before June thirtieth. We have that wellness grant of over fifteen thousand. I think their capital improvement amount, it would be nineteen thousand dollars. And they know they need to get the stuff ordered and all that, so then this is, when we say capital projects for next year, I do have a number in there, I think it's like five thousand dollars for next year, but we'll continue to look for grants and if we get them, we'll amend.
Alright, anything else on there?
Were, were you to be allowed to say that we're going to issue the check until we get the budget?
Absolutely.
We don't wanna get drove. If our house is on fire, we want them to come. Okay.
Oh, um, he just, uh, has a question, not that probably matters to us, but part of that agreement also had this pretty extensive inventory. Does that have to be updated every so often? I mean, it didn't really say it in the twenty-eight E language, but.
Um, that's a good question, and I would ask the city attorney that and get back to you, how about that? Cause I'm not sure.
Cause, I mean, it doesn't, I don't think it matters what.
I didn't know if this just was when we entered into it, this is what we had.
Cause I know there was that big division of city to not city.
Right.
And this is the stuff that they took, or that they got to use or have.
Right, that became part of their property, that was the city's property, yep.
I mean, it probably was just that, it was just saying, this is what we are claiming we are now in ownership of.
And now it doesn't matter to us.
No.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Cause God knows, I'm not trying to start a war. I heard, I heard it was enough of one, but I didn't.
Alright, anything else?
Are you ready to make a motion on this list of?
We have a motion to pay the, um, bills.
Yep, you're all done with that.
Alright, so, um, we have a motion in front of us that we will not, uh, issue the check.
Okay, so you're making, are you making a motion on this with your stipulation on the fire department?
Is that it?
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
That's what I was thinking you're doing? Yeah, we haven't made any motions yet.
Alright, so. We would like to move that this budget. We would like to move that this budget be accepted. And that the check to Frontier not be issued until we. The city receives a budget and a financial statement from them.
The amount of thirty-two.
Of the amount of thirty-two thousand five hundred.
Receive a budget for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and a financial statement for twenty-four, twenty-five.
All right, so. We want to move that we pay this, we accept this budget.
For the boards and organizations.
For the boards and organizations. And we would like to stipulate that Frontier will not get its check in April. Until we receive a budget for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. And a financial statement for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five. By April.
April first?
April first, okay. Got it. Do I have a? Do I have a first, yes.
I thought you were making a motion.
Oh, then I just made the motion.
Okay.
All right, do I have a second?
More a second, is that right?
Sure.
I thought you put your hand up.
Okay, is that a roll call?
No, if you just say all in favor.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed.
Carry, all right, okay, so now you have the resolution before you. Um, this would be setting your actual tax rate, which I gave you a copy of the budget. And this is setting your truth and taxation statements, so that the auditor can get your truth and taxation sent out by their deadline. So this is proposing a balanced budget. Your tax rate for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six will be at fifteen point three seven one four four. Um, your current tax rate is fifteen point three five one two eight, so. Not too much of an increase there. And your resolution on here then sets your time and place for your truth and taxation statement. I believe we're looking at that April seventh, it would be a special meeting. Um, it would be at six o'clock. You would have your public meet hearing to, anyone can come in and agree or oppose. Their tax levy after they get their truth and taxation statement from the auditor. You will adjourn, and then at six-thirty, you will go back into another meeting. And you will set your public hearings for your budget finalization, which will be like April twenty-first. So you'll have two special meetings in April to get through your budget here.
The first meeting is April sixth?
I believe it's the seventh.
Seventh.
Yeah. The seventh, then you would have, that, at that meeting, you'd have two meetings, they'd be back-to-back in time. And then you would set your final budget hearing for April twenty-first. And then you would finalize your budget, it's due by April thirty-first to the state. So this resolution would be setting your time and place for your truth and taxation budget hearing. Which would be April seventh at six o'clock.
So you need a motion.
To approve the resolution, yeah.
Make a motion that we approve the resolution fourteen forty-eight dash twenty-four, setting the time and place for public hearing on April seventh at six P M.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept this resolution. Roll call, Mark. And Strom, yes, Mooney?
Yes.
Angle Hard?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so, so move, move. Okay. And again, open it to.
Yeah, I can.
Okay, anyone from the public has a question? Or comments, would like to hear that now, please? Seeing none. Dennis submitted a report, are there any council comments?
The only one I have is the one I made about the trash totes.
Okay.
Completely agree.
Yeah. Well, and some of them get blown, it's a safety issue too, you know, they get blown into the street and.
You have to tell Kuzner about not to dump them back in the street when they put it down.
They do, but the wind, I mean, every day we've got wind whipping around, so.
Oh, you know what, I noticed this, and when I walk the dog, I go by the pool, and you know where the? The cussler, whoever our trash people are, they put that dumpster by the pool.
Kuzner?
There's electrical box there that's taken off and there's wires cut, and I don't know if that has to do with, if it's, if it's for that, or if it's an old one that's. It's by the bike rack, if you wanna check it out, somebody. I don't know if that's the one that controls that, or all that stuff is back in the back part, if it's just not used.
Okay, we'll check it out.
Anyone else? Well, we hope Dennis gets well quick.
I for one.
All right, any, anything else to come before the meeting? Not well adjourned.
I will re-adjourn.
All right, second?
No second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye.